Hey, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can we start with a roll call, please?
Council President Corman.
Here.
Councilmember Prince. You're muted, sir. Did I see you?
Here.
Councilmember McGurven.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran. Councilmember Benedetti.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Roll call Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember McGurven.
I move we excuse the absent councilmember. Can I second?
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, and in my earbuds, it's Councilmember Prince seconded it. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay. Now, first up, we have a proclamation. Lunar New Year Day.
Okay, proclamation Lunar New Year Day. Whereas the traditional Chinese Lunar New Year celebration, also known as the Spring Festival, dates back as early as the 14th century B.C. And whereas 2021 is the Year of the Ox, which is a symbol of wealth, prosperity, diligence, and perseverance, and those born during the Year of the Ox are said to be balanced, trustworthy, patient, and modest individuals. Whereas the Lunar New Year is celebrated uniquely in many different Asian countries. But regardless of the country, culture, religion, or ethnicity, the day is a time for family reunions, gatherings, reaffirming bonds, and reflection. Whereas the diverse Asian community in Renton is home for many Asian families that have been here for generations, as well as newer Asian immigrants. And whereas the city of Renton, with its rich demographic diversity, beautiful parks, friendly and prosperous businesses, many community services, and excellent schools, has provided a welcoming environment for the Asian community to call Renton their home. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim February 22nd, 2021 to be Lunar New Year Day in the City of Renton. And I encourage all members of the community to join me in this special observance. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 22nd day of February, 2021. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor?
That's Councilmember Van.
Yes, and thank you so much, Jason, for reading the proclamation. I move the resolution, I'm sorry, I read, I move the proclamation to be adopted as read. Thank you again.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Van, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. And tonight, we have a couple people here to accept the proclamation. And first is Frida Takamura. Frida?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Frida Takamura, a longtime Renton resident, a former member of the Washington State Commission on Asian Pacific American Affairs, and an active advocate in the Asian community. I'm honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Renton Asian communities. The New Year celebration, as alluded to in the proclamation, is probably the most important yearly event in our diverse Asian communities. It is a time we gather, honor our ancestors, have family reunions, and reaffirm our bonds to and in our communities. As you know, the Asian communities here in Renton are the largest collective community of color. Some of us have been here for generations, and others of us are newer immigrants. We trust and hope that Renton is a proactively safe and just city where we, as Asians, can continue to live and thrive, where we can continue to contribute to this great city that we call our home. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Frida. Next up, we have Victoria Du.
Hi there, everyone. I am just glad to be here with the others to accept this proclamation. And I thought it was extra important to be here just in light of some recent incidences of racial hate crimes happening, even in our own community of Renton. I wanted to be here and just have a voice and make sure, I guess, the City of Renton knows the importance of denouncing the anti-Asian hate crimes that we're seeing in our community.
Great, thank you very much, Victoria. Next up, we have Brian Doe. I don't see him here. Is Brian with us tonight? Okay, let's see. The next person is Kang Doe.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you so much for the recognition and the proclamation. It's meant a lot to our community to be recognized and work together with the City of Renton and thrive in the future. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All right, thank you for joining us tonight. We really appreciate it. And actually, this is probably a really good time to discuss, I know we've had some issues in our community recently that have come to light. And over the weekend, I got together with the council president to form a statement that really reaffirms Renton's stance on inclusion. And so, I'd like to read it now, if I can. "We in Renton stand for a community that celebrates diversity and understands that we are better when we stand together, build bridges, and seek to understand one another. As one of the first cities to incorporate inclusion as part of our vision statement and business plan, we believe that differences enrich us and hate has no place here. On August 3rd, 2020, the mayor and city council affirmed the city's commitment to opposing discrimination against all groups in Resolution Number 4414. We condemn hate speech. Hate speech has the effect of dehumanizing people and carries forward harmful stereotypes and propagates false beliefs through the use of statements of inferiority, slurs, expressions of contempt, disgust or dismissal, cursing, and the calls for exclusion or segregation. Such behavior should be and is unacceptable in a community such as Renton that maintains diversity as one of its core values. As community leaders, we pledge to continue to teach, cultivate, and model the values of openness, diversity, tolerance, and anti-racism. We are committed to a standard that makes all of our citizens feel safe and valued. Positive change starts at home. With each one of us, we urge you to move forward with love and compassion and empathy. Stay united and together. Make our community a better and our city exceptional." Okay. So, thank you very much for being here. We really appreciate your statements. So, Happy New Year. Okay, next up, we have a public, we're going to open a public hearing. And I believe it will be Paul Hintz.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Allow me a moment to share my screen. Once again, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. For the record, I am Paul Hintz, a senior planner in CED. And for those of you listening tonight, my phone number is 425-430-7436. And my email address is P-H-I-N-T-Z@rentonlaw.gov. Tonight's public hearing is in response to the Urban Center Zone, our interim zoning controls. Emergency ordinance 6012 was adopted on January 25th, 2021. The emergency ordinance established interim zoning controls for the Urban Center, or UC Zone, which requires that development multifamily provide commercial space integrated into the ground floor equivalent to 33% of the site's land area. And that multifamily development is subject to our residential mixed-use standards of Renton Municipal Code 4-4-150. And that the building setbacks in the UC Zone mirror that of the commercial RT Real Zone. State law requires a public hearing for emergency ordinances be held within 60 days of adoption. Ordinance 6012 will sunset on June 25th of 2021, unless superseded by city council or extended by pursuit of state law. By way of background, the Urban Center, or UC Zone, is intended for the creation of dense employment, destination retail, recreation, and public gathering spaces with the potential for large-scale redevelopment opportunities that will create a mixed-use retail, employment, and residential center. The purpose of the UC Zone is to provide an area of pedestrian-scale urban mixed-use development that supports the residential and employment goals of Renton's Regional Growth Center. A development agreement between the City of Renton and the Boeing Company governing many of the use and development standards in the UC Zone sunset on December 31st of 2020. Without that development agreement in place, there are insufficient zoning controls for new development in the UC Zone as compared to the zoning controls for other commercial zones in the city, thereby limiting the city's ability to further the policy and purpose of the zone. While tonight's public testimony will be in response to ordinance 6012, there will be further opportunities for public participation as staff works with the planning commission and city council's funding and development committee to develop permanent standards for the UC Zone. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have any communication or anyone signed up to speak?
Mr. Mayor, I have a letter from Jack Burke, or asset manager for the landing.
Okay.
To summarize, he's basically thanking everyone for the opportunity to comment. He wasn't able to make the meeting tonight and that he will work with Cliff Long and his team in the future for any, basically, he wants to continue discussing this with the city for over the next six months or so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have no one signed up in advance to speak this evening. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council regarding the interim zoning controls for the UC Zone public hearing? If you would like to speak, please use your computer to raise your hand. If you have joined by calling into Zoom and would like to speak, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. And it looks like I have a hand raised. When I call your name, please state your name and city of residence, and you will have up to five minutes Mr. Wolf, go ahead.
Mr. Wolf is muted. There we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, hi, Mayor and councilmembers. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Brian Wolf, and I'm a partner at Bay West Development. For those who don't know, Bay West is a west coast owner, operator, and developer of real estate. We've been in operation for more than 40 years. Probably, our most notable project in the Puget Sound area was a redevelopment of the Seattle Design Center a number of years ago. We focused on a relatively small number of large projects where we feel we can be transformative or add significant momentum to an area that's already developing. We currently have about 2.5 million square feet of commercial space and a little over 5,000 residential units in our development pipeline. We primarily focus on areas with high concentration of technology or education-based employment. We're very excited about our 11.5-acre site on Garden Avenue where the current Fry's Electronics is located. As I'm sure you know, with the advent of Amazon and others, big box retail in general is on its way out. As such, this provides the terrific opportunity to rethink this property given the proximity of the Landing, Southport, Boeing, and the potential Topgolf. Because Renton has all of the strong economic factors we look for when developing a new project, high-quality office space and employment, a vibrant retail scene, new recreation, we see this property as the perfect opportunity to build upon this foundation with new residential housing that will complement and strengthen these nearby uses. This vision is also supported by Renton UC Zoning, which specifies the desire to create a mixed-use retail, employment, and residential center. The one piece that is missing in this area is new, high-quality housing. Adding this missing element advances the city's vision of this being a live, work, play, and stay location. We're at the very early stages of our site planning for the property. We submitted a pre-application package to Renton at the end of last year with a very basic site plan for a mixed-use project that included just north of 1,300 units and an activated street cape and ground floor level. We were working 100% within the existing code language, and the purpose of the preapplication was to start the process of a discussion with the city on how to continue to add vibrancy to this area. Shortly after our preapplication meeting, we had a great conversation with staff and expressed the willingness and desire to meet many of the city's goals as possible. We were informed that city council had adopted an emergency interim zoning ordinance that changed our underlying zoning. As you can imagine, this caught us totally off-guard as we thought we were having productive conversations with the city on how to make this project as successful as possible. We were disappointed that this emergency action for a number of reasons. First of all, we're fearful that this signals to the business community that even if you're following all the rules in place, the city will utilize emergency actions to force you to do otherwise. As you know, predictability generates economic investment, and we certainly hope that this doesn't force businesses to look elsewhere in other, more business-friendly municipalities where the rules don't change midstream instead of investing heavily in Renton. We're also disappointed that this action slowed down and potentially halted the nearly $40 million in projected retail spending that our project was to bring the city from our new residence. This would have helped small, local retail businesses struggling in this rapidly changing retail environment and the challenges that COVID has brought. Finally, we're disappointed this action slowed down the creation of high-quality housing that could have attracted further high-quality employers and jobs to the city. Despite these disappointments, we're still very committed to doing everything we can to work with the city to create a true 18-hour district in the Landing and Southport area. We have many projects across our portfolio which show how we've developed housing above dynamic, well-designed ground-floor retail and enhanced landscapes that have created a successful, popular retail environment. We're excited to show you those projects and how we can do the same here in Renton. In addition, the retail spending from our new residence will generate more than $1 million in annual reoccurring sales tax revenue to the city that will otherwise be zero once Fry's closes. Our project will also generate thousands of new family wage jobs from the construction and operation of the property. It'll generate over $20 million in development and impact fees and over $10 million in sales tax revenue from the construction of the project. We look forward to working creatively with the city in the coming days to find a way to get a great project underway. I want to thank the mayor and Chip Vincent for engaging with us thus far, and we look forward to council's feedback as well as we move ahead. Thank you for your time today.
The next person we have signed up is Raquel Timmons. Raquel, go ahead.
Greetings all, can you all hear me? Yes, okay.
Yes, yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council President Corman, and members of the council. For the record, Raquel Timmons, Senior Vice President for CECO Development, owner and operator of Southport right here in Renton. And I'm happy to be with you tonight and see so many familiar faces, a couple of new faces for me, but happy to also see my former colleague, Paul. It's been such a long time since I saw him in person. So, at some point, I'm hoping to see you all in person really soon. I actually plan on keeping my comments pretty brief. I appreciate staff's presentation and would just like to offer a few thoughts as we're a large landowner of the UC Zone and are in the pre-development process for Southport's expansion. In general, we're supportive of working with staff to explore standards that diversify the UC Zone retail base and ultimately support the city. There are a few considerations we're hoping the city will keep in mind as we go through the process. And the first being, from our perspective, retail square footage is an artificial metric, as evidenced by Fry's. Size is not what's contributing to the retail base. It's the spending. And when you layer in this sharp pivot towards e-commerce, there's no doubt that the complexion of retail is changing. Everything from big box to our small mom-and-pop spaces are struggling. And we're hoping to work towards development standards that choose a more flexible approach because oversupplying the market with a ton of retail space, in our opinion, is not the best way to provide fully-integrated, smart retail spaces, which is what we need for the city to stay competitive. So, that's first. Second, we're hoping that the city will approach from a macro lens. There are several hundred acres within this district, many ripe for redevelopment. And it's very challenging to prescribe these ecosystems on a site-by-site basis. It makes sense, in our opinion, to have sites that are primarily residential and are within a walk shed to concentrate at retail spaces and employment. Every single use does not have to live on every single site. And if we're able to achieve porous, ground-level environments, we can create that "there's there", which is vibrant and becomes the place where people really want to ultimately spend, which is what we're trying to achieve. And then lastly, we all know housing continues to be one of our region's biggest challenges. I sit on the city's Housing Action Plan Committee, and having access to relatively affordable housing is something that CECO continues to promote. It's one of the best assets in Renton, especially when it comes to attracting large employers. And so, meaningful residential projects, as exemplified by the redevelopment of the Fry's site, is something our company is really excited and has, we've been sharing over the last couple of months since we became aware that there was a possible redevelopment. And it's actually been received very well by potential office users who are wanting to provide options for their employees to live nearby. So, with the large infusion of housing units, we believe there are significant economic benefits to be realized, including addressing the needs for the city's housing growth and diversification, and as I mentioned, attraction for large employers and search for housing for their employees. But probably the most relevant is large increases in retail spending for the area. The last thing we want to see are projects like Fry's redevelopment or even our own expansion projects die on the vine because we're unable to get them underwritten to a standard that doesn't actually support the city. Big spaces don't always equate to smart spaces. So, I appreciate being given the opportunity to testify tonight, and again, look forward to being part of a collaborative conversation in the near future. And I'm happy to answer any questions from staff or the council on behalf of CECO. But other than that, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Yep, sorry. The next person we have is Nancy. Nancy, go ahead.
Hi there. I'm sorry, I don't know if I rose my hand, raised my hand at the wrong time. I just had an audience comment that wasn't related to the public hearing. And I just wanted to thank you guys for an awesome snow response. I had the, I don't know if you would call it the privilege of driving to Burien in the midst of all of that, driving up to Fairwood to my job twice.
Nancy?
Yes.
It's Jason, the city clerk. I'm sorry. We will have an audience comment portion for these types of comments in just a minute.
Okay, I'll lower my hand. Sorry about that.
No problem, thank you.
I see no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, what's those to the council at this time? Or is there any comment or conversation from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Corman.
Well, I would just like to say I appreciate the testimony we received tonight. And I, to me personally, it's really important that we continue to work collaboratively with the developers of those projects and make sure we're, that the vision we have is also an achievable vision that's going to be successful. It's clear that they have perspective that they can bring into this discussion. And I appreciated hearing that they're grateful to you and Chip for continuing to work with them. So, you know, from my end, I think it's important that, I mean, these are, these are big, you know, marquee projects that are right in the middle of a growing part of our city. It's important that we get them right and, you know, review the intent. But I don't want, I don't want the investors to feel like we're going to be calling all the shots and not taking their interests into account. I think it's important to hear them and work with them, so, for what it's worth.
Thank you. Any other comments or input at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Prince. Or Councilmember Prince.
I move we close the public hearing. Second?
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince and seconded by Council President Corman that we move the public hearing. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. So, next, we have the administrative report.
Good evening, Renton Council. I have your administrative report. The Public Works Maintenance Division spent the week of February 11 through 16 responding to a significant amount of snow, ice, cold temperatures, and cleanup. The following is a summary of their efforts used to treat our roadways and keep them safe during this event. I think our previous caller, Nancy, will appreciate these numbers. Total miles plowed by our plows were 8,884 miles. De-iced was 1,419 miles. 412 tons of salt were used, 193 tons of sand, and 8,965 gallons of de-icer were used and 8,965 gallons of de-icer were used during this week of February to clean our streets. So thank you, Parks Maintenance. The Water Utility will be hosting a virtual information session on the 2019 Water System Plan Update on Tuesday, February 23rd, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on the goals of the plan. Supporting documents and a link to the virtual session may be found on our website Finally, information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentinlaw.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting, and unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open. That is your administrative report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we will open the remote audience comment period. There remains the strong intent of the city to have public comment regularly included on our agendas. Each speaker will be given five minutes to speak. You will be called upon by city staff member. The staff member will call the speaker's name and unmute the appropriate microphone, which will send an automatic prompt to the speaker of, you have been unmuted. This is the speaker's cue that it's their turn to speak. Please begin your comments by stating your name, city of residence, and the topic you are addressing. Speakers should be able to see a timer on the screen. Please finish up your comments when you see the timer is getting close to expire. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have one person signed up in advance to speak. When I call your name, I will unmute you. You will have up to five minutes to address council. We have Paula Sardinas. Paula, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Paula Sardinas. I'm a resident of Federal Way, Washington. I'd like to thank the mayor, council president Corman, and the honorable members of the council. I am a former resident of Renton, Washington. I'm here tonight to speak in support of Puppy Land, a new great business coming to your community. I've been a member of PETA for 17 years. I was a foster parent to a great dog, Max, for 17 years that was a rescue pet. And I strongly support the community being able to get puppies of their choice from a source that meets their family's need. When we lived in Renton, our daughter was the victim at 17 years old of a vicious assault. And a therapist recommended to us that we get her an emotional support animal. Our daughter volunteered every week, three days a week, at a rescue agency in Essaqua. We thought this would be quite easy. We had a history with PETA. We were animal lovers, and we had all of our documentation. I can tell you, as a black mother in a BIPOC family, this was not easy. We had to answer a lot of poetic questions. And ultimately, even though our daughter was in distress, we did not get the puppy. We ended up choosing our puppy from a hobby breeder. And if at the time we had had Puppy Land as a choice, we would have purchased our puppy from a pet store. Let me give you a little bit of information about why we support Puppy Land. They operate above USDA standards, including giving tenure guarantees on any puppy you get from them. They do not source their puppies from puppy mills. They are creating wonderful jobs and providing incredible emotional support animals during COVID-19. We have personally been working with the owners for over two years. We have traveled to multiple states, and we have met and interviewed their breeders. We've given them a lot of standards that as pet lovers, we hold ourselves accountable to. And in most instances, it would have closed most pet stores. They adopted all 30 of the standards without regulation and without legislation. In communities where their puppies are sold, they overwhelmingly sell to the BIPOC community. They do not engage in predatory lending. I have very close relationships with the DFI, and I can tell you, if they did, they would be coming under the scrutiny of the DFI. The interest rates on a puppy, if you would opt to finance mirrors that of what I pay on my Target credit card, and I do love Target. And so I would strongly encourage you to welcome this lovely young couple, these owners, into your community, to allow them to work with families that look like mine all across Renton. Their values mirror your own, and they will run a good and safe business. We, I'd like to thank you, council members, for your time tonight. And I'm happy to take any questions that you may have. Thank you.
That was the only person I had signed up in advance to speak. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address council? I do see three hands raised. So Nancy, go ahead.
Hi, me again. I just wanted to thank you guys for an awesome snow response. I had the need to travel to Burien and Bellevue during that incident and several times up the hill to my job in Fairwood. And compared to, which comparisons are odious, I get that. But Bellevue and Burien, Burien was an absolute disaster area. Bellevue was almost as good as Renton, but I was so proud. I moved here almost 14 years ago from Kirkland, and I never dreamed that the services and the staff and the police force and the parks were going to be so much better than Kirkland. And so I just want to thank you for your continued hard work and everything that you do for this city and just give you a little rah rah and thank you so much for all your hard work. You don't hear it nearly often enough.
Nancy, do you mind stating your last name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Nancy Quinn. I live in the city of Renton.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Corman.
I just want to, I want to thank Nancy for those kind comments and for staying with us through the two hearings to share that with us. That means a lot. Thank you.
Sorry to have spoken out of turn.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
The next person we have is Francisco Aragon. Francisco, go ahead.
I no longer see him on the screen at this point.
Yes, I, okay, the next person.
Oh, there he is. He's, he's, there he goes. Now he's unmuted.
You got me?
There you go.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Armando. My name is Frank Aragon, and I live in Newcastle. And I am OCA Asian Pacific American Advocates, Greater Seattle Chapter Board Member. Our national office is in Washington, DC, and one of our missions is racial equity and inclusion. We promote fair treatment and the elimination of discrimination, stereotyping, and hate crimes. Recently was brought to our attention that our racist and hateful slur was hurled at an Asian American here in the city of Renton. He was called a chink. Since the beginning of a pandemic, there were 3,000-plus hate crimes targeting Asians nationally that were recorded. It appears this city is not immune to the hate virus. I just heard Armando read a statement condemning this hate crime, and yet I heard differently. Renton City Councilmember King Khan Von tried to have the city mayor, her colleagues, and the city council and the police chief to take immediate action and denounce this hate crime, to take it seriously, but to don't avail. They all sat on their hands and did nothing. Renton's largest minority population is Asian at 21, 2%. And I'll say this to them and our allies, now that you know who your friends are in City Hall, vote them out. Thank you.
The next person we have is Michael Itty. Michael?
Hello, Mayor, Council President, and members of the council. Thank you so much for the time. I'm Michael Itty. I'm the executive director of CISC. We're a social service agency, and we have an office that's a block away from IKEA. Our main office is in Seattle Chinatown International District, and we also have a location in Bellevue. And our clients speak many languages, including Chinese, Vietnamese, Russian, and Spanish. And I appreciate the council's proclamation earlier in the meeting around Lunar New Year. And also I'm grateful for Frida and other community members representing the community during the proclamation. I also want to speak about the, I also know that I, I also work with many members of the council and know that you're committed to social justice and racial equity. And I want to make sure that, you know, we're working together, having the city and community leaders working together to ensure that the city's departments are responding to issues and know that the public should be able to report incidents to the police and to other members of the city to ensure that, you know, these incidents are taken seriously. I know in Seattle and other cities in Bellevue, their police chiefs have clearly said that, you know, they should report any incidents of hate or bias and that those responses will be taken seriously. King County's Office of Equity and Social Justice also has a coalition called the Coalition Against Hate and Bias. And CISC, along with other organizations, are members of that council, or of that coalition. And we're able to take reports as well. So thank you for your time.
The next person we have is Winter Cashman. Winter, go ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I just wanted to speak tonight specifically about the issue with the hate crime, but also tonight about a sort of related issue with the association of a police officer who is still employed and their business affiliation with a prominent Proud Boy leader who was arrested at the Capitol on January 6th. I wanted to sort of echo what was said by a former commenter. I think it's important that when events like these transpire, that the city not delay making a statement condemning what happened, condemning white supremacy, condemning hate groups. I think that's very important because our communities are hurt when we see videos like what happened. And I just wanted to suggest that the city explore, as they consider the initiative for safe spaces, how we can do better to support victims of hate crimes and how we can better equip our businesses and our police department so that way something like this doesn't happen again. Thank you.
The next person we have is LaFaiteli Faitala Iwane. Go ahead.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is LaFaiteli Lydia and Faitalia. I am Tongan and Samoan and here on behalf of the Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander communities to talk about the recent incident involving the racial slur in downtown Renton. I am part of the King County Against Hate and Bias Coalition, but also a part of the Washington Kappa on Asian American and Pacific Affairs and a concerned community member. I want to thank the mayor for reading his inclusion statement. However, our community is asking for action. With that action, I'd like to call a training regarding equity and diversity in the city of Renton for community members, along with council members and police accountability, to have these difficult discourses. Second, I'd like to denounce, I'd like the city of Renton to denounce anti-Chinese and Asian American Pacific Islander rhetoric, bias, and hate crimes, rejecting the terms like Chinese virus and kung flu in the midst of COVID-19. I'd also like to reiterate that public health has named racism a crisis and that we must remember that there are a lot of communities that are suffering. And I am concerned as Renton has 25%, makes up 25% of Asian American and Pacific Islanders communities, has one of the largest communities of my community in your city. I would like to work together with your council and our communities across. And how do we bridge and address these issues and learn from one another? With these, with having these tough conversations comes progress and healing together. Thank you very much for the time, and I look forward to seeing what the city of Renton is going to do.
I see no one else, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for commenting. Appreciate the input. Next up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I have a letter I received.
Oh, I apologize. Let's read the letter.
So I received 14 letters from local business owners regarding the Red Lion. It's pretty short, so I'll read it. "We are the small business owners, employees, and citizens of Renton writing to you out of our frustration with the Red Lion near Renton Village 1 and I 167, SR 167. According to the Seattle Times, one person died and 35 people tested positive for the COVID-19 virus over a two-week period from mid-December to early January. How many shoppers, employees, and neighbors were infected when residents of a homeless hotel walked unmasked into local businesses before being tested and isolated at King County's quarantine facility in Kent? The cost to the local area businesses extend far beyond COVID. Every morning, the parking lot is littered with heroin needles, discarded clothing, urine, and feces. The ground behind the building is strewn with empty water bottles and food wrappers. Cars are broken into, and shoppers are frightened away. We're a constant target of brazen shoplifting. The impact of the homeless hotel to employees, customers, and neighbors is untenable. If small businesses, if small business owners continue to shoulder the costs to repair vandalism, shoplifting, and ongoing damages to our businesses, Renton Village will consist of a series of empty storefronts by early summer. Please pass the Homeless Shelter Ordinance, upholding the zoning rules of the city of Renton." And once again, this was signed by 14 local business owners, delivered to City Hall and sent to council earlier today. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, next up we have the consent agenda. There are four items for council's consideration.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Corman.
I'd like to just ask if any council members would like any items removed for special consideration?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item D.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And with that, I move approval of the consent agenda as published minus item D.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Council President Corman, seconded by Council Member Perez. The council concur with the consent agenda minus item D. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Council Member McGurbin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this agenda item has to do with the two-way conversion for Williamson Wells, specifically with the train crossing. And so there was an opportunity to improve the utility system when they did that. That resulted in a change or in the contract. And so what I'm getting at is we need to get this approved ASAP as a matter of timeliness now. The, in the long run of it, is we were able to save quite a bit of money by getting this utility improvement done now. The short term is I would like to get council to go ahead and approve this in that time. So with that, I would move concurrence with item D.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council Member McGurbin, seconded by Council President Corman, that the council concur with item D on the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Unfinished business. Council President Corman?
And no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Council Member Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Finance Committee has committee report.
Okay, Finance Committee, committee report approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Accounts payable total payment of $5,692,008.25 for a number of vouchers and payroll benefit withholding vouchers and four wire transfers. Payroll, a total payment of $1,542,668.68 for a number of payroll vouchers and checks. This is the January 16th through 31st pay period. Kidder Matthews vouchers totaling $34,059.52 and municipal court vouchers totaling $10,914 even.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Member Prince? I move that council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second?
It's been moved by Council Member Prince, seconded by Council Member McGurbin, that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the next finance report is regarding the request to hire a Water Utility Civil Engineer III at pay grade A29 step E. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the hiring of a Water Utility Civil Engineer III at pay grade A29 step B effective March 16th, 2021. This is an existing position currently budgeted at step C as a result of the position being charged to the Water Utility Fund, which is an enterprise fund. There is no impact to the general fund.
Mr. Mayor? Council Member Prince?
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second?
It's been moved by Council Member Prince, seconded by Council Member McGurbin, that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council Member McGurbin?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Council Member O'Halloran?
She's out.
Oh, she's not here. Council Member Benedetti?
No unfinished business. No, that's okay. No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Council Member Van?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council Member Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, next up is unfinished business. Council President Corman?
We're, new business, right? Is that what you said?
Please, Louise.
Okay, yes. There's no legislation. We just did unfinished business. Okay. Yes, next up is new business. Council President Corman, new business, please.
Yes, okay, I'm just going to announce that on March 1st, Monday, at 6 o'clock PM, we have a committee of the whole meeting. It's via video conference. And two items on that agenda. The first is the introduction of our new airport director, David Dakota. And the second item is blighted property resolution. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council Member Prince?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council Member McGurbin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd just like to announce the Transportation Committee will be meeting at 5:00 PM on Monday, March 1st. We are just going to have one item on the agenda, since the second one, we went ahead and approved council concur tonight. And that's just emerging issues. And so our new airport director, David Dakota, is a popular guy. We're also going to be introducing him in the Transportation Committee, so that'll be fun. I'll get to see him lots that day. The second thing, I just want to really quickly take a moment, if I can acknowledge some of the public comment we heard tonight. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that statement. I know the community was deeply injured by the events that happened. I saw the video. I think we all saw the video, and I think we all agree there's no place for any sort of hate like that in our community. So I look forward to being able to swiftly, I think you can never condemn actions like that quick enough. We need to make sure that there is no space for, no tolerance for that sort of hate in this community. So I just wanted to offer my sentiments on that for the audience members who are still with us today to let them know my thoughts on the matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Council Member O'Benedetti?
Council Member O'Benedetti, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The March 1st meeting of the Utility Commission, or I'm sorry, Utility Committee, has been canceled. We will meet again on the 15th of March. And I too just want to thank the members of the community who spoke tonight for talking to us about the incident that we, that we all saw and echo Council Member, Council Member McGurbin's statement that, you know, we really don't have any place for this in. McGurbin's statement that, you know, we really don't have any place for this in our community. It didn't feel like the Renton that we love. And I am grateful for your statement, Mr. Mayor, and I hope that we follow it up with action.
Thank you. Councilmember Van.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For new business, we have on March 1st, 2021, at 4:15, our Community Services Committee will be meeting via video conference with two topics on our agenda. One, Community Services Staffing Level slash COVID-19 Impacts, and two, emerging issues in our Community Services. And, Mr. Mayor, at this moment, if I may take a moment in addressing the comments that was made by community today. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your inclusion statement. And I thank the community members for making their comment tonight. You know, like many of us, being a person of color, you know, woman of color, but being a Renton resident, I was rather disappointed and concerned and angry this past week without having an acknowledgement from our city administration to not condemn hate and bias at the moment that it happened. Certainly, we cannot talk about the prosecution of the individual case, but as I believe and as some of our community member here, I hear you and that we must denounce hate uncritically and use passion, compassion, accountability and community to heal our community. In my volunteer work for the King County, in King County Office of Equity and Social Justice Anti-Hate and Bias Coalition, communities and members and I who documented hundreds of bias and hate incidences throughout King County and in Renton this past year, where a Chinese-American kindergarten was being called China Virus, and a black resident had, was held at gunpoint by a white supremacist a block away from City Hall. I've heard stories and traumas and folks reliving the traumas. You know, racism is not an isolated incident. Our council proclaimed our commitment to an inclusive community that rejects stigma and bias related to COVID-19 on May 4th, 2020. King County proclaimed racism is a public health crisis on June 12th, 2020. So I share this with you because I speak today to really ask the city's plan in addressing hate and bias in our city and in light of the recent incident that happened on February 13th, 2021. And I hope to have discussion with my colleagues tonight, a thoughtful discussion, because we've done a proclamation. How many more proclamations should we do and how many more inclusion statements should we do? So I'd like to open it up if it's okay to hear thoughts.
Is that, is that, are you finished there? Do you have more comments to make? We can open it up afterwards here.
Yes, we can come back to it, but I would love to hear other council members' comments.
Okay, Councilmember Perez.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, are there any other comments from any other council members at this time? Okay, what is the wish of the council?
And so, Mr. Mayor, if I may ask?
You may, yes.
Yes. And so I like to have a discussion on this, a thoughtful one, because I don't want to just, you know, move for a motion or, you know, to move, to refer a matter to the city to do a resolution on this. And I've talked to Councilmember McGurbin about it, Councilmember Corman today, and I think it's something that really, really is intentional because at this most pivotal moment in time, when across the nations our elders are getting attacked and we don't, and here at home as well, I would love to hear your comments.
So, so my comments at this point is I do agree that, that there's no place for this in our city, so much so that we've had two proclamations and we just passed a resolution codifying it and strengthening it in our business plan. The council's been very clear and I'm sure that the upcoming retreat will even deepen the resolve to work around creating an inclusive city. So I don't, I'm not sure exactly what we're, what we're going to accomplish tonight on this. This is, this is something that's near and dear to the entire council's heart and, and the council's been loud and clear with the administration. And I think, you know, the next steps are certainly to bring this issue and other issues to the mayor's inclusion task force. I mean, and that's, that's, you know, why they're there and why they're formed. I think that's the, really the venue for this kind of work to be done. So we have a hand raised, Councilmember Benedetti.
Actually, I think Councilmembers Prince and McGurbin were ahead of me.
I only, I'm sorry, I only saw one hand. Okay, Councilmember Prince then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree, this is an issue that's important to our heart. But I will also say that it's hard to have a thoughtful and meaningful conversation when it's, when we're just told we're going to have that conversation tonight. I think that having this conversation at our retreat where we have time for such things as this is really the appropriate course of action. And so, I mean, again, obviously this is important. You know, I've been working on racial justice for the majority of my professional career, so it's something that's near and dear to my heart, but I think that trying to have it kind of sprung on us and thinking that we're going to be able to have a thoughtful meaningful conversation at this moment is probably not the best course of action. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember McGurbin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Councilmember Van for at least raising the issue and bringing it forward. I agree with Councilmember Prince that certainly, I think we can deal with that deeper dive in a retreat setting versus tonight. I want to make sure, I think as long as this specific issue doesn't get lost within the context of a conversation, I don't think it will, I think that's an appropriate place to have that conversation. As Councilmember Benedetti said, you know, I think the action is the part we're looking for here. I think the community wants to know what we're going to do. And I think, obviously, I don't think we're going to come up with solution or answer tonight, but I think we are going to be, you know, we can continue to work and I appreciate the steps we have taken to include it in the business plan. And I don't know that anyone thinks, you know, we can't solve these issues 100%. We can continue to root it out wherever we find it and tamp it out. But, you know, unfortunately, some of the, these people that are coming, that we're seeing now, they've been there all along, they're just more visible now and there's more video of it now and we're seeing it happen in real time. And probably the cases we're not seeing too are, are the ones that we never hear about are even the more troubling ones of them. So I do look forward to having this conversation. I think it's an important conversation to have and I want to give it, when we have the, the time and ability to do that, and thankfully our retreat is coming right up, so I think it will still be fresh of mind, an appropriate time for that.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Benedetti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to thank Councilmember Van for bringing this as a, as a, as a, as a call for a larger conversation. I, I agree that I think we're going to be able to have a better and more informed conversation at a later time after there's been some opportunity to prepare. And I would also hope that as, as part of that preparation, that we would have more investigation into some of the things that Councilmember Van has discussed, some of the incidents that she's described, and, and also, you know, some, some suggestive courses of action that, that we really take a look at what it is that is within our purview to do about this. And so I would, I would call for a conversation at a later time with more information as part of that conversation. And whether that is at the retreat or at a special committee of the whole, I will let the administration and council president decide.
Thank you. And I do not know who was first, Council, Councilmember Perez or Council President Corman?
I think Councilmember Perez was ahead of me, I think.
Thank you. And I appreciate, I appreciate everybody's comments as, as Councilmember Prince mentioned it, not just as a council member, but some of us, we've been lifetime committed to this cause. I personally, when I saw first the incident and the video, I right away called not just Councilmember Corman, but also the chief and the administration and everybody because I wanted to be brief early on about what was the, what was the action taken by administration. And of course, I was also very pleased to know that the, the police department took right away action, but fortunately, these kinds of situations, we do need to respect, respect the victims' wishes. So it's very hard to make statements right away and I understand that. I understand the position of the city. I have made, personally made a talk with a lot of members of our community and, and today I want to thank everybody that called and expressed their concerns. I don't want everybody to feel that we're dismissing their comments because not, we're taking very seriously the situation. We have always taken very seriously this kind of situations. And, and yes, having a proper venue to, not just for us to discuss what are the next steps that we can take when these situations happen, but also to be brief about what administration did step by step, when is, when the capacity for them to be able to disclose the details. And because obviously, my understanding is this is a current investigation and I understand that there are a lot of things that cannot be shared at this time, not with us or with the community. But in order to be very transparent about when this incident happens, what is what we are doing and in the future, if this is working and if it's not working, what can we do very practically? I don't think it's in any might question the serious commitment of this council and this administration to really make sure that in the city of Renton, hate crime is, is not acceptable. Obviously, it's not acceptable anywhere, but specifically in the city of Renton, we, we, what our, really our action where our wars are. And with that, I'm going to yield and pass the torch to Council President Corman.
Okay, Council President Corman.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Perez and my colleagues and Mr. Mayor. And I just want to add to, I mean, I agree with the comments that have been said and want to add to that, that I did have a chance to meet with the council liaison, the retiring council liaison and the new council liaison this last week. We went over the council priorities and everybody, everybody submitted racial equity and justice as a high priority item that they want to have discussed. So we, we are scheduling that. I just wanted to confirm that. It's probably not a surprise to any of you. And we will, we'll make sure we give it plenty of time. It's obviously high on everybody's list. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Van, you have your hand raised?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you colleagues for your comments, your last 10 minutes of extra. I really appreciate it in our community to hear it. Well, I understand that, you know, hate and bias is something that we don't tolerate, but there's a delay in denouncing hate is an issue with community. At least the folks I've had thoughtful conversation with during the community conversation that I put together, because there's a lot of healing that needs to be done within our community, with a broader, broader Renton community. So to talk about specific details of the case, when we talk accountability, I do not care about the detail of that specific case as far as the prosecution, but I do care as elected leaders and as we are governing a city, to make our city whole and what does that mean, our community whole. And I look further to the future discussion that we'll have. And I appreciate your comment, the last 10 minutes extra. Thank you.
Okay, what is the wish of the council at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Corman.
I move that the council meeting recess into executive session for approximately 30 minutes to consider, review and evaluate discussion with our legal counsel over matters of potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42301101I, with no official action to be taken and that the council meeting be adjourned when the executive session is adjourned.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember, Council President Corman, seconded by Councilmember McGurbin, that the council adjourn into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss legal, possible legal matters. And there will adjourn directly after, there will be no action taken. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, we are off to executive session.